Thank you everyone for joining us for this evening's town hall. We've been doing our town halls since we went into shelter in place. And it has provided an opportunity for us as a city to really engage with our community. And have an opportunity to both share information as well as to engage with all of you. And have you share with us and ask questions. And so we've had some general town halls, some covering just COVID. And then we've gone into different topical areas such as high speed rail, Hale Avenue. And this evening, we are very fortunate to have with us our representative on the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors, Mike Wasserman. And I think many of you know him, but I do want to provide a brief introduction. And the first part is to let you all know that one of the things that he's known for is having a head for numbers and a heart for people. And that's something I appreciate as a CPA and also being a very relational person. He was first elected to the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors in 2010 and was reelected in 2014 and 2015. Prior to his election to the board, he served eight years on the Los Gatos Town Council. And that included two terms as mayor. He serves on, I'm going to pause for a second, 28 committees. That includes chairing the county library district, traffic safe communities network, South County United for Health, the Santa Clara Valley Habitat Agency Governing Board, and the Emergency Operational Area Council. And I'm fortunate to serve on that representing Santa Clara County City Managers. Mike has earned a reputation as a pragmatic and common sense leader with a collaborative leadership style. And he coined the phrase real life help to describe the services our county, Santa Clara County, provides. He has a degree in psychology from the University of Southern California and was a certified financial planner and small business owner for more than 30 years. And my favorite part, he has been married to his college sweetheart, Kim, for 40 years. And they have two adult children and three French Bulldogs. And there she is. So with that introduction, Mike, I want to thank you for all that you do on behalf of our community. Morgan Hill, Gilroy, San Martin, of course, areas to the north of us as well. And with that, I would love for you to just share some remarks with us. And then what I'd like to do is open it up for questions and answers. And I'll help facilitate that through those that are dialing in and with calls as well as through our Q and A feature.
Wonderful Christina, thank you very much. I want to show off my shirt right now. So I came prepared.
Excellent.
And I want to tell all of you listening to this that you are extremely fortunate to have Christina Turner as your city manager. I've known a lot of city managers. I've been an elected official for 18 years. I currently work with, let's see, I represent five cities. That would be 33, 38, 33 council members, five mayors, and five city managers. And all together, let's see, Morgan Hill now is about 50,000 people? You're muted Christina, about 50,000?
Just shy of that.
Just 50, okay. And District One, of which Morgan Hill is one of the five cities that I represent, has 400,000 people in it. So it's eight times the size of Morgan Hill. And the county of Santa Clara is now at 2 million people, which the newest census, and please make sure you complete your census. The newest census will show 2 million people. Roughly 40 times the size of Morgan Hill. Yet I have to tell you, Morgan Hill has a very, very warm, soft spot in my heart and in my wife Kim's. Yesterday, she ate at the Ladera Grill and then went to, I forget the name of the bakery. It's a gluten free bakery that you have in town. And brought home three loaves of gluten free raisin bread. So we got that. And one of my very best friends in the whole world recently moved to Morgan Hill, from San Jose to Morgan Hill. And I want to give a shout out to Dick Sparr. With all that said Christina, I could, unfortunately, I'm an expert now in the public health orders and indicators and stages one and stage two early and stage two expanded and attestations and exceptions and stage three and stage four. And I know about our testings and our positivity rates and our hospitalizations. None of this stuff did I know 101 days ago. That's just what life is. During the last 100 days, I have been not working and out for three hours. I was the keynote speaker at the Los Gatos Memorial Park's Memorial Day Ceremony. And then I was the keynote speaker at the Veterans Memorial in Los Gatos on Memorial Day. Other than that, I've just been answering emails and texts and phone calls and Zoom meetings and Zoom meetings and Zoom meetings. Did six of them yesterday. Our board meeting a couple of days ago started at 9:30 in the morning and got out at 11:15 at night. 14 hours, the longest in my 18 year career. The one prior to that was 12 hours. And a good percentage of each of those was spent on COVID. What's going on? We had a housing crisis, which we've had for years and doing a great job housing 8,000 homeless people in the last four years. And we still have more than that now. They're becoming homeless faster than we're housing them. Then came along this virus with a worldwide pandemic. Our Dr. Cody was the first in the nation to do a shutdown. That's the reason that we have the lowest positivity rate in the state of California among the 10 most populated counties. So we did that. But when the United States and California and Santa Clara County shut down effectively in a week's time, we've now entered, we're beyond the Great Recession, which was a financial problem with our banks. And we're kind of in between the Great Recession and the Depression because we have 20, 30 million Americans unemployed while we're fighting this unseen virus. And that's what's going on. And I've been very, very active and proactive, and I'll shut up in just a minute to answer questions, about saying, okay, we got a virus. We sheltered in place. There's 70 labs working on a cure. There are 45, I believe, viruses in the world. And I believe there's 10, not antibiotics. I just forgot the word, that we're hoping we get it. What's that?
Vaccinations?
Yes, thank you, thank you. I didn't want to say antivirals because that's something different. And the antibodies is something different. There's only about 10 vaccinations in the world. We may have this virus forever. We may have something invented that cures it. We may have something that lessens the effectiveness of it. There's what's called herd immunity, which apparently takes about 70% of the population having got it and built up antibodies and not able to get it. There's people who think 5% of the population has got it. There's doctors. I got a thing from a person in Stanford saying, let everybody out, let them all get sick. Have herd immunity, have it happen. There's schools of thought both ways. It's, we don't know what this is. We've never experienced an economic and a pandemic at the same time, an economic collapse at the same time. And there's all kinds of different opinions. There's a lot unknown. The rules that we're under now Christina, were established three or four decades ago by the people in Sacramento who thought, okay, if a public health crisis comes along, let's give our public health officers sole discretion to make the rules on what's best for their county. We'll have the state public health officer issue an order, and that's with a capital O. And that means it's a law enforceable by the police and the DA that applies to all 58 counties in the state of California. But within each county, each PPO, PHO, public health officer can make them stricter if he or she wants to. And let's do that. Well, as long as I've been elected 18 years, we've never had the need for our public health officer to exercise this unique authority that the governor and the president and the Board of Supervisors and the mayors have no vote on, no say so on at all. It was an idea that came up 30 years ago just in case. And this is what we're in the midst of now. And when this thing is finally over Christina, I think lawmakers will look at the existing laws and say, okay, maybe we need to tweak this a little bit depending on how our economy is affected. Because when our economy is closed down and people are unemployed, they're not paying payroll taxes. They're not selling things creating sales taxes. There aren't peoples in the hotel and motels paying TOT transient occupancy tax. Because they're not earning as much, they're not paying income taxes to the franchise tax board and to the IRS. And all of those taxes are used to pay for public health and public safety and infrastructure and schools. And we can't just put our head in the sand and hide and not educate our children and not have the schools babysit our children, educating them while the parents are working, and not be able to pay our law enforcement and our hospitals. So this is the problem that we're in and we're coming out of it. But a lot of people think like, well, we're coming out of it. Well, the virus hasn't gone anywhere and there is no cure. And a new one may show up next week. So we need to find this happy median of, say, outside dining that's better than no dining, but not as good as outside and inside. Or inside retail limiting the number of people at a time, which is better than no retail, but not as good as all retail. And now my personal pet peeve, which I've been championing for the last 30 days, is the personal services industry. And full disclosure, my daughter is a stylist, has been for 15 years. Okay? So I'm arguing, and I did during our 14 hour meeting just two days ago, that I think it would be reasonable and equitable, fair, that personal services such as barbers and stylists, estheticians, hair and nail salons, yoga gyms are allowed to open partially, limiting the number of people and following safety protocols with acrylic where possible and masks where possible and do that. And I can tell you because of what I learned from my daughter and what's called the state board, these personal service people, very strict, excuse me, very stringent laws they must adhere to every day. And they are willing and ready to adhere to more stringent laws just for the right to be open. And we need to put people back to work and we need to do so safely. And the two things, and I'll end with this Christina, the two things that I argued for vehemently last couple of days and 100 plus emails a day is that all businesses that can operate safely be allowed to do so. So there's partial restaurants now, there's partial retail now and constructions going. These things are going. But these businesses that have been closed for 100 days, 100 days, I think today, most of which are self-employed contractors that cannot get unemployment, many of which are from the minority community, need to be allowed to be reopened and operate safely. I guarantee you, if you went in to get a manicure with a mask on and sat back in a chair and in front of you was a sheet of acrylic with a hole in it and you put your hand through it and on the other side was a person with a mask on and gloves who did your nails. And then when you were done, you pulled your hand out, went to the cashier, put your credit card in where there's acrylic between you and the cashier, made your next appointment and left. That is much safer than what I am seeing occur every single day. I'll just say, I won't name any specific city, in all downtowns. The other day I walked downtown to get an acai bowl at Vitality Bowl. Okay, tropical bowl's the best. I walked downtown with my mask on by other people who had AirPods on their ears and no masks because we don't require it. And they were just talking and going like this and God knows what was coming out of their mouth into the air while other people without masks walked by them. It is safer right now, in my opinion, to go get a haircut or get your nails done, go to a gym than it is to walk down the sidewalk of most streets to go to a farmer's market where people are reaching over each other, et cetera, to squeeze fruits or vegetables to see if they're ripe or not. And many of them touch it and leave it. So I'm arguing for all these businesses, personal service businesses, gyms, yoga, barbers, et cetera, be allowed to be open with restrictions. And I'm hoping for that soon. I just got word a half an hour ago that Dr. Cody, our public health official, is going to make an announcement tomorrow regarding our new order, which is expected to come out midweek next week. And in my heart and mind, I believe and hope that it will deal and address the personal service industry, hopefully allowing more personal service industries to open all with safety protocols, which I know they're all ready to do. And anybody listening on this meeting, if you have a business, go to the state, C A D P H, go to the state's website and look what those requirements are to safeguard your business. And then go to the San Mateo, San Benito, Alameda County websites and look at what they're doing for personal service businesses and make all those changes, if you haven't already, in the next few days to your business. So that when the order comes out and if it does allow these things, you're ready and you can call your clients and get going. I'll shut up with that. Thank you very much.
Great.
Sorry, but I get fired up every time.
Yeah, no, I want to, I want to thank you for sharing that with us. I want to start off by just asking a question. Before I do that, I want to just recognize that council member John McKay is with us this evening. And I know that he was instrumental in getting you to join us tonight. And in, so with that, in your plea for opening up certain services like personal services and other areas.
I'm also asking that the faith based churches be allowed to expand from 25 to 100 because I know in South County, the acreage they have, and they could certainly expand out six feet apart with masks on and have services. Thank you.
Thank you. So when you say that you're appealing for this to be allowed, who are you asking, right? And so I just want you to share with this group, you know, Dr. Sarah Cody in her capacity as public health officer can only do so much.
Yes.
There's requirements in place. So help us understand how that's, that's all, all the pieces work together.
Thank you. An excellent question because the public, the majority of the public, despite my doing 150 emails a day, doesn't sit in and listen to a 14 hour board meeting. And they can learn all of this on the county's website. But at the end of the day, the state public health officer, Dr. Sonia Angel, as compared to Dr. Sarah Cody, Sonia, Dr. Angel is the state public health officer who got this job about eight months ago. Okay, talking about trial by fire, right? But she makes an order that applies to the whole state. We must all follow that. Each individual like Dr. Sarah Cody can choose to make it stricter if she wishes. Because Santa Clara County is currently between this early stage two and expanded stage two, we are currently the 53rd most advanced county in the state. And advanced it mean in terms of being open. Well, there's pluses and minuses of being open. The reason we have the lowest positivity rate in the state is because Dr. Cody had us shelter in place sooner than anybody else. The reason we've got the lowest positivity rate in the state is because we have reopened or opened slower than just about anybody else. So that's where we are. She gets the final word, but she has several mentors who are all doctors. Everybody's an MD, everybody's concerned about life and they're all doctors that she consults with. Also in our emergency operation center is Dr. Jeffrey Smith, who is our CEO, James Williams, our county council, our emergency operation people. And they're all talking. In the first order that came out Christina, it was a group of six agencies that got together, five counties and the city of Berkeley, because Berkeley has its own public health department, which is very unique to a city. So the six of them were all together on the first order. Then on the second order, there were like five of them. On the third order, there were like four. And I don't know what's going to happen on this next order that she's going to talk about tomorrow that will come out next week. But it's the local public health officer who gets the final word on do we follow everything the state says as is or do we make a few things more strict? The public impression, because we're 53rd least open, is that Dr. Cody is an impediment that she's preventing us from doing this and preventing us from doing that. Well, there are some things that she's stricter on. For instance, the state public health officer said for us to meet the state's five indicators, one of which is number of tests per day. The state PHO said, we must, each city must test 150 people per 100,000 of population. We have 2 million in population, which means we would have to average testing 3,000 a day to meet the state PHO's indicator. Our county PHO, Dr. Cody, said 3,000 seems like a bare minimum. I think we should have 4,000. So it has taken more time to ramp up to 4,000. However, in the last few days, we have done over 4,000 each day. And in the last 10 days, we are averaging 3,100 tests a day. Well, then people see news headlines or social media headlines that say county positives double from two weeks ago. Well, yes, they have, because the way we know somebody's positive is we test them. And when you test 1,000 people a day, we always get between 1 and 2% of those people are positive. When you test 2,000 people a day, you get twice as many positives. When you test 3,000, you get three times and 4,000, you get four times. So yes, we have now four times more positives than per day than we had a month ago because we're testing four times more people per day. It's totally logical. Our percentage in the last 10 days is 2.1%. The lowest of the 10 most populated counties in the state of California is 3.6%. We could do 50% worse and we would still be the lowest. Those people that criticize Dr. Cody, they criticize her for increasing things like the indicator, excuse me, the testings from 3,000 to 4,000. What they aren't aware of, for instance, is that six weeks ago, Dr. Cody asked the state for an exception. She wanted to allow all places with swimming pools to put in lane dividers and allow in lane swimming. We had lots of people asking for that so they could still exercise. It's one person in a pool with chlorine and Dr. Angel, the state said no. So we couldn't do that. But that doesn't make the news. Three weeks ago, Dr. Cody allowed inside retail and outside dining. The cities such as your city Christina, Morgan Hill, Los Gatos, where Kim and I reside, San Jose, Campbell down the street, all said, we're going to help. Narrowed streets and allowed tables and chairs out on the sidewalks where they weren't allowed before because they knew the restaurants were starving. And the restaurants weren't able to employ people and they were losing money and they weren't paying landlords. So the cities came to the rescue and Dr. Cody came to the rescue. But people didn't know that because the ABC, the alcohol beverage group, which regulates alcohol licenses, didn't allow about two thirds of restaurants that didn't have city approved patio areas to serve alcohol out on the sidewalk. So this big issue came up where the state was saying, wait a minute restaurants, you don't have the authority, the approval, the license to serve alcohol despite what your, Dr. Cody says, despite what your city council says. You don't have the authority to do that. And the state public health officer said, no, you don't have, that's expanded stage two, not early stage two. Well, our county council and the state council negotiated for a while and it's being allowed now. And it's being done so in a safe, safe way. But Dr. Cody went and did that before she was allowed to do that. And the reason you can go inside retail is because of Dr. Cody. And the reason you can eat outside is because of Dr. Cody. The reason we're not at expanded stage three yet, excuse me, expanded stage two, is because of Dr. Cody being more conservative than the state order. And that's going to be modified with the order coming out next week. I don't know to what extent, but my gut says it'll be more opening.
Mike, thank you for really working on our behalf in striking a sort of a balanced approach, a smart approach in figuring out how to open.
I don't have, I don't have a vote Christina. The Board of Supervisors doesn't have a vote. Your mayor doesn't have a vote, hi Rich, okay? All we can do is give our two cents at our various meetings and pass on the emails we get, all of which we do.
Okay, so I'm going to start reading some of the questions we received. And if you have raised your hand, we'll get to those questions as we can. And if you just are joining us by your phone, you can do star nine to raise your hand. And so with that, from Mark Van Wyk, Supervisor Wasserman, I would like an explanation from you why the county of Santa Clara is imposing the below outrageous rules against churches. These far exceed what the state requires and rules like the host must keep a list of the names and contact information for participants and no singing or shouting violate my rights. Please give me your opinion of the county rules and also please tell me what you intend to do about these rules. You've shared, I think, a bunch on that, but anything else that you want to add?
Yes, I can. It was challenged. You know, it was interesting, it was brought up Christina, because with the recent public protests that we had, that took place over the last few weeks, peaceful protests and rioting protests and all the rest, there were people locked arm in arm and shouting and without masks and all the rest. That was a couple of weeks ago and we're getting a surge now. So there might've been people with COVID there and it was getting spread. We, we don't know, we'll do the tracing and all the rest. But people challenged, you know, that was the right to assembly and right to free speech. People challenged in both the state, the superior courts and in the US Supreme Court. And at both levels, the court said that the public health order has the right to say churches may not meet or limit the number of people. So what is happening is lawful and has been allowed, has been confirmed by the states all the way to the US Supreme Court. So they've confirmed that. So that's what's going on. It's currently, I believe, 25 people, six feet apart. What I was asking for was there are some places of worship that are 10,000 square feet. And there are some organizations that are worshiping inside people's homes. And to limit them to 25 each regardless of venue, didn't make any sense for things that were allowed inside or things as far as outside. So what I suggested and is now happening, it happens in retail where number of people inside is based on square footage of the store. I think what's happening now is the number will be increased on the number of people that can gather as far as inside based on the square footage. So that'll make sense. But as far as the singing or the yelling, I think that's kind of common sense since this virus has spread through, through our mouth, particles and such, why that's not being allowed. I certainly am in favor of allowing places of worship to gather six feet apart. Everybody has a mask on except for families that can be huddled together, like in a car, but they can be huddled together, but groups six feet apart with masks on. And I hope that's included in the new order that comes out next week.
Okay, great, thank you. From David Lovato, has the city of Morgan Hill and the Chamber of Commerce discussed weekend downtown street closures to allow business along Monterey Road between Main and Tennant to stretch out and bring more tables out serving more people? We did have a town hall dedicated to that. And then we also talked about it at a city council meeting. And the decision was made to, we were looking at closing one lane in each direction on Monterey Road. Decision was to not go forward with that. But we will be bringing back some information about what it would cost to do closures. Let's see, the next question to address is for international travel, I'm required to have a COVID-19 test within 72 hours of travel and also have a medical certificate. Where do I go in Santa Clara County for such a test and certificate? So Mike, I know that we can go to, I think it's SECfreetest.org. Now, he's referencing also a certificate, which I'm not familiar with. Is that something that you know about?
I don't know about the certificate, but simply contact our public health department. We now have 46 sites throughout Santa Clara County, several in South County. You can go on the county website, it will give the location of all 46. So you can find the ones in and closest to Morgan Hill. Testing in a couple of different ways, but I have heard that the big long Q-tip that they stuck all the way up your nose to your brain, they're not doing that anymore. They're doing the less invasive ones at the bottom of the noses. So you can get that. Please be aware, if you get tested today and you get your results tomorrow, it's simply saying you didn't have it today. You can get it tomorrow. So on the one hand, we want everybody to get tested every day, which will certainly get us over our $4,000, 4,000 number of people per day. But, and you're allowed to go as often as you want, people. So if you want to get tested once a week, go for it. That will help our counts and anybody and everybody can get tested. Originally, it was public safety and public health personnel. And then it was people over 60 years of age and, you know, all the rest. Now anyone can get tested any day, whenever they wish, and it's free. So please go get tested, get our count numbers up and also give yourself some reassurance that at least on that particular day, you got that at least on that particular day you got tested, you didn't get it. You didn't have it.
Yep. And we work together with you and with the county in putting up a testing site within less than 24 hours, and we did-
Fantastic job, Christina. Absolutely. Percentage of your population, short notice, you guys, first place.
Yay, yay. So yeah, so we hope to do that again. So I just wanted a note for the attendees, we do have a lot of comments rather than just questions, and so I am gonna just first go to the questions, and so attendees, if you want to kind of scan through some of these comments, and then, Mike, we'll find a way to share some of these comments with you that we don't get to. Okay, from Patrice Lynn, "The COVID-19 cases in our state have increased significantly lately. What percent of the daily totals do you think is due to the increase of COVID-19 testing?" So I think-
The only way our total increases is by testing. So we don't know if our totals increase or somebody's positive if we don't test. The reason our positives have increased is, A, because our testing has increased. We are doing, we, the county, we, the state, we, the nation, are doing many more tests per day than we did before, than we did 30 days ago. So that is a number-one indicator, but that is not an indicator of increased positivity. For instance, LA County has been at 6% positivity for about six weeks. We have been at 1% positivity for the last six weeks. Now, in a couple of communities in Santa Clara County, the testing is showing about 3% positivity in those couple of communities. Those happen to be communities where there is more dense population, where there are more people living in the same home. So the spread, if there is somebody who has the virus, it spreads faster than the more isolated places. My sister-in-law lives in Colusa County. They've had three positives in the whole county. But their entire county, where we have 2 million, has 31,000 people. Okay? So it's, you don't want to compare counties to counties. There's more people in our District 1 than there is in all of five districts of Santa Cruz County. So the numbers so far have been staying very, very, very much the same. 1% here, 6% in LA.
Okay, so I'd like to now go to the couple of attendees that have their hands raised. And so, Michelle, if you can help me to allow Mark Van Wyk to speak, and it looks like you can just now go ahead, Mark, and unmute and share your comments or questions.
Hey, Mark, go ahead.
Me, Mark Van Wyk?
Yes.
Okay, actually, I have a bad internet connection.
Yeah, if you speak a little bit louder, you'll be okay.
All right, so, you know, you already talked about the churches and so forth, although I think there's been tremendously inconsistent application of the rules.
Yes.
I think you talked about that, but I'm not real satisfied, number one, that it's been taken care of. It's like, well, we'll look at it, but, you know, I think that's pretty important, that it be looked at really fast. And now, what's with the, you know, I'm not comfortable giving my name and address. You know, when I attend a church, I think that's an intrusion of my rights. I don't have to do that when I go to Walmart or go to a, you know-
Mark, let me interrupt. I've never heard until this second about anybody having to give their name and address. That's-
Well, you're very thoughtful, and I will give you the eight rules. I can list them all for you, and these are by the county of Santa Clara. I'm surprised that you are not familiar with them. Would you like me to-
I can look them up. Is this on the county website?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I'll look them up. Thank you, Mike. This is the first I've heard from anybody about, about any rules, unless there was a positive case found.
No, sure. The names must be taken, and if there's a positive case, all the people would have to be tracked down and quarantined.
Yes.
Oh, but, you know, like, you don't have to do that at Walmart. So I think that's an outrage. In fact, that's what I said in my original, that's rule number eight, no, rule number five. The host must keep a list of the names and contact information for all people that go to the church, and only 25. That's, okay, so we'll beat that one to death, but that's outrageous. I guess, you know, you look at my comments about the protests and all of a sudden COVID, you know, you've got an assembly person, Ash Carla, encouraging people to march and hold hands and everything.
Yep.
And you look in the Mercury News, I know you don't control that, but all of a sudden COVID went away. It's like, no COVID. And I understand the terrible incidents that happened, you know, in Minneapolis, but very inconsistent. And I guess my only other thing I'd like to-
Yeah, I don't know about what Ash Carla did. I, that's outside the county, but I certainly understand the distinction you're making about needing names and contact information. I wasn't aware of that. Thank you for letting me know, and I'll certainly voice an objection to that.
I'm done. I can go on and on, but I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mark, for letting me know.
Michelle, if you can help me with Adam Roca? Adam, you can go ahead, unmute.
Yes, thank you for taking my call. So, yeah, I kind of just, you know, it's the same old song and dance, you know, it's, we, what you said, Mike, we all know. We all know what you said. What people want to hear is, "When are we gonna open? What steps are you taking to open?" Okay? Have you gone public with your desire to open? Why don't you do this, for example? Why don't you go to the Mercury News and tell them, "I want this to be in the front page," or "I want to write," saying that I'm in favor of opening up our economy, instead of hiding behind the Health Director Sarah Cody, okay? And, okay, at the end of the day, she doesn't have to control everything, okay? Because other counties have fired their health directors if they kept, if they were too stringent, and there is no reason for us to be closed down. This thing-
Let me, let me answer your question.
Getting names in churches? Are you kidding me? Did you get any names of the rioters that were out there tearing up our cities? Okay? Mike, I live, I live near, you know, Santana Row, you know? I had to, I had to go home because my family was scared of the environment that was there that day, okay? This is a total scandemic, okay? It's a scandemic, plandemic, okay? And you know very well, this is not gonna be over until the elections on November 3rd or whatever it is, okay? And I can't wait until we get to the elections, and you people that are doing all this can be walking around with masks in your faces still, okay? Another thing I want to add is, what are you gonna do about masks, though they're so bad for your health, okay? It's been more than proven, especially with people, elderly people, and people with health issues that are better health. What are you doing about that?
Yeah, let me answer some of your questions, Adam. Anybody with health issues, no one is required to wear a mask unless you go inside of a business. You can also bring up your shirt or anything else like this if you need to go inside. There are absolutely exceptions, there is no-
Mike, if you cover your nose with your shirt or mask, it's the same thing.
Okay. Anybody doing any exercising, not required to wear a mask. Anybody outside, not required. Anybody with a health issue, not required. At each of our board meetings, which are live and are public, they're covered on TV, I'm quoted in the newspaper and ABC and NBC and Gilroy Life and the Metro yesterday or the day before. It specifically says, Wasserman, "The leading advocate for reopening of businesses in Santa Clara County. I've been doing that for over six weeks now, wanting more and more businesses to be reopened, and that's what's happening." Three weeks ago was announced, more businesses at one time than any time before. It wasn't as much as I wanted, it was much more than anything we did before. And she said, "Three weeks," which is tomorrow, would be when she would report back, based on the data she gathered. She is reporting tomorrow as promised. And as I opened up in my opening remarks with Christina, there'll be a new order coming out next week, and I hope it addresses all the personal service businesses, as well as the church and the faith-based. And as I told the previous speaker, I didn't know until a few minutes ago that for churches, you needed names and contact information, which makes no sense to me at all, because when you go sit down at a restaurant, or when you go into a retail store, or when you go to Walmart, or Taco Bell, or Home Depot, you don't have to do that. So that doesn't, again, that goes to my number-one thing that I opened up with. I think there's inequity-
Inequity.
Unfairness, inequity. Thank you. Inequity, unfairness going on that the order needs to address. And I'm hoping that next Tuesday or Wednesday, the order will address that and level the playing fields between businesses.
Okay, but you still haven't answered my question about the masks. You're saying to cover with your shirt. If a person has a breathing problem, it doesn't matter if it's a mask or shirt.
Yep.
You have to cover it. And if they have to go to their bank and do their banking, and the banking, okay, there's a problem right then and there, okay? We have elderly people that are not online. They would not have a medical thinking on an app.
They would need a medical exception. You're very correct.
And what are you doing about that?
I'm sorry, the medical exception allows for that. That's what exists. All they have to do is get a note from their doctor.
Thank you, Adam. We're gonna move on to Steve Malik. Michelle, if you can help me with that. And Steve, it looks like you are ready.
Yeah, I'm ready. Thanks, Mike, for taking my question. I wanted to talk about NS 9.289 and 9.288. Those are the moratoriums on real estate evictions for renters, both residential and commercial. I think that the problem with the wording on that moratorium is that there's no requirement to have to pay for up to, like, four months after the end of the moratorium, whenever that is. Now, right now, it's been extended to the end of this month. I don't know if it's gonna be extended further. The problem is, is that assumes, that puts a burden, first of all, on the landlord. But it assumes that the landlord doesn't want to negotiate with the tenant, and it also assumes that the tenant will have the ability to pay back, and a lot of them don't. And so what that does is put a real financial burden on just the landlords.
Yep. Steve, can I respond? Can I respond to you?
Yeah.
So, full disclosure, Steve and everybody else, real estate has been one of my small businesses for the last 35 years. I have 20 commercial and residential tenants in three, three different cities. I gave them all half off their rent in April, not deferred. I forgave half the rent in April, half the rent in May. And then I told them I couldn't do any more than that, because I still had our mortgage payment and our property taxes, and our insurance, and our utilities, and our landscaping, et cetera, et cetera, the same as you do, Steve. And everybody is now current. Of those businesses, 90% receive PPP money, but I did not ask for reimbursement. I was able to do, not all landlords can do that. Some can do it longer than me, some can't do it as long as I did. But I gave all my commercial and residential 50% off their rent, and they've all come around, except for one person. The big change that's been made in the moratorium, it was basically to protect tenants from not being evicted for non-payment, because those tenants weren't allowed to be open. The florist at my shopping center, the nail salon, the hair salon, even the restaurants that could be open, doing to-go food, you might get 20% of your normal gross, 10%, you still couldn't make it. So it wasn't fair to them. But, so evicting them is out of the play. What the change that I think has been made, Steve, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is it has now allowed tenants to repay what is owed over a 12-month period. What was a fallacy in Sacramento was thinking, somebody who owes $2,000 a month rent, they don't pay in April and May and June, and then, let's say, July, they go back to work? Well, they can't just come up with $8,000 if 2,000 was a stretch. And if they were getting unemployment, it breaks down, a third of unemployment breaks down to $800 a month rent, which isn't gonna cover any $2,000 a month one-bedroom apartment in Santa Clara County. So I think what they've reached, Steve, is the best compromise between making it possible for the tenants to repay their rent. And I think what's interesting is, right now, there is no forgiveness. There were actions taken by certain organizations to forgive rent, leaving the landlords holding the bag, but still responsible for the mortgage payment and the taxes and the insurance and everything else. But it's this deferral, it's kind of like the IRS and the franchise tax board. They have deferred the payment of income taxes, as has the tax collector with the state of California for property taxes, but none has been forgiven. I think the proverbial "you know what's gonna hit the fan" when these people finally do need to pay back what they haven't paid, and they're just starting back to work. It's, I'm not sure what's gonna happen there, and I think there's gonna be a lot more homeless people, Steve.
Yeah, I know, I have, I agree that you did the right thing. I think that if you've got the means, and this is not for me personally, but I've got family members who, their only income is rental properties.
Yep.
And so they're getting hammered hard, you know? So they're having to, like, skip meals, because they can't afford to buy food. And so, so, yeah, the stimulus check helped, but that's not enough. And so there are situations where small investors could be, you know, losing their investments-
Oh, yeah.
-because of this. Now, fortunately, you had the reserves to be able to do what you did, but there's, there's nothing in the wording that says that any amount has to be paid back for, what I saw, 120 days. And then at that point, you can start the eviction process, which can take another six months.
Yeah, but none of the money's forgiven, Steve. I hope it doesn't get to many evictions. I hope landlords and tenants work it out. But even if you need to do an eviction for non-payment, and you do the unlawful detainment, and you go through the process, the judgment you will end up getting will be for the full amount. And I've been through a lot of those in my 35 years. One, I got 12 years after, because that individual went to go buy something, and it was recorded judgment, and we got paid off 12 years after the fact. I just hope most landlords and tenants, because they both have something to lose, and they both have something to win, just work out a payment plan of some sort in order to do that.
That's always the best case. Thank you for taking my question.
Thank you, and I wish the best for your family members. You know, a lot of people just think about the tenants, a lot of people just think about the landlords, and it sounds to me like you're thinking about both sides. And one of my favorite expressions is, "No matter how thin you make a pancake, there's always two sides." Thank you, Steve.
And Mike, our understanding is that the state and the county eviction moratoriums have been extended to July 28th.
Yep, yes.
With that, we have a question from Morgan Farrell. "What makes dealing with COVID-19 from a medical perspective different from other viruses, especially considering that this virus is one no one has ever seen before? Also, from a scientific perspective, how much has been learned about COVID-19 in general that might potentially help to combat this novel virus?"
You know, novel kind of sounds, kind of describes what it is, and your person that wrote the question, Christina, was spot on. This is brand-new. We've never dealt with this kind of thing before. There are 15 other causes of death in the world that have killed more people year-to-date than COVID, but COVID is not understood. They, they don't know if it, we don't know if it has a season. You know, regular influenza seems to come around more in December, January, February. And the reason for that is, it's raining outside, and kids don't get outside as much, and people are inside, sorry, that's my puppy in the background wanting me to pay attention. People are inside more, and when you have more contact, then it spreads more easily. This is our first year of COVID. This will be our first July with COVID, our first August with COVID. What is fabulous and fascinating, and I hope continues for other things, is that the entire world and 72 labs that I know of are working on a cure, a vaccine. See, I remembered the word this time, Christina. A cure for this virus. There are tons of other viruses in the world that I hope, when this is all done, they all say, "You know what? Let's keep going." More people die from the bacteria in water, more people die from diarrhea each year than have died from COVID. There are so many things that if the world could unite and work on together, they could solve. But this is our first year of a novel, novel, new virus, and we're gonna find out. For instance, some people assumed it's a virus, it goes away when the weather gets warmer. Well, no, it doesn't. And the reason less people get influenza during the warm months is because during July and August and June, July, August, kids are out playing, and they're not confined so much. And the reason we get more influenza during the winter is that they're inside. And the reason we get more influenza during the winter is that they're inside. Same with adults. You don't go out for a walk in the rain. So we're going to find out about this virus. But I think, I really think we're going to come up with a vaccine, an antiviral, a something that at the very least reduces the seriousness of this. And most importantly, for those people in our long-term nursing care facilities. We have approximately 155 deaths in Santa Clara County year-to-date from COVID. Approximately 45% of those are from, occurred in our long-term nursing care facilities. They all had pre-existing serious diseases, which is why they were in the facility they were in. And the COVID, the respiratory effect, the part on the lungs, is what finished them off. So 45% of our mortalities, we know where they occur and who is most likely to not survive. And while I'm in favor of reopening everywhere to one extent or another, but not sharks and earthquake games where you're yelling, "Go sharks!" side by side with your masks off and spitting out into the air and everything else. I still want us to maintain our quarantine-like environment in those long-term assisted nursing care facilities. We've had more suicides in the last month or so from depression than we have from COVID. We have more cases of domestic violence than ever before because of sheltering in place and because of COVID. Some of the facilities, my mom's in a facility, they're allowing the people out now for dining, just started this month. Lunch and dinner, but they each set at their own table. And it's not mass dining. It's kind of like on a ship. There's the early seating and there's the late seating. So they can put one person at each table. And my mom can say hi and wave to her friends at a table away instead of at the same table. But they're allowing, they're finding ways to live with this disease. We have to find ways to live with it and to work around it. We have to go back to work, or we're not going to have the money for a hospital to take care of the people that need a hospital.
Mike, we have some questions on testing, and so I pulled up our county dashboard. And last, it was updated was as of today. So we've had a total of patients tested of 136,114 with positive results, 3,888. The test positive rate is 2.86%. And the average day's turnaround time is 1.7 days, and I can attest to that. I had a test, yep, there it is, and I have it on my iPad here. I had a test on Tuesday and got the negative letter today, so two days later.
Can I make a couple of comments about that?
Absolutely.
One, part of you is happy you're negative.
Pointed.
Right? Many, everybody I know wishes if they had the blood test that they had the antibodies and had COVID and didn't know it and can't get it and can't spread it. But what you were looking at, and this is very important for your viewers that go and when they look at the test positivity rate, please know that is a year-to-date number. So if you're a sports nut like I am, if you go four-for-four batting your first day, you're hitting 1,000. At the end of the year, if you go four-for-four or oh-for-four, your batting average doesn't move because you've got 600 at-bats. And that was for you, Dick Sparre, okay? That 2.87% is the year-to-date total of 136,000 people tested. The first 20,000 people we tested, Christina, were all referred by doctors who had flu-like symptoms, who instead of just staying at home, went to their doctor, had an examination, and the doctor determined that the symptoms shown during the examination were COVID-like, not just influenza-like, and then did a referral and sent that person for a test. When that person who had symptoms that the doctor confirmed went to get a test, the positivity rate was 10.5%. Let's just call it 10. That means, gives you an idea how difficult this is, nine out of 10 people that doctors after an examination felt had COVID-like symptoms did not. They only had regular influenza. But at the end of the first month, the first 20,000 people, 10.5% tested positive. That 2.9% positivity rate, I believe you said 2.8, 2.9%, is a cumulative with the first 20,000 testing at 10.5%. Our last 40,000 have tested between 1% and 2% because we're testing everybody now. And I believe if we could test all 2 million people tomorrow, the positivity rate would be under 1%. Because right now, we are focusing, while anybody can get tested, we are focusing on a couple of areas that have a higher positivity rate than anywhere else in the county. Like I said, around 3% to 4%. So that 2.9%, 3% number is year-to-date. In all of Santa Clara County, all 2 million, I bet were under 1%.
Great. I'm sure you now appreciate those statistics classes that you had in college.
I did have those classes.
Okay, I think we have one more question. And Mike, I think you said at the beginning of this call, people can feel free to email you. Michelle, can I also ask you to put in the chat the address, the website address for Santa Clara County to ask a question? And so you can go in there and ask a question and you'll get an answer from the Public Health Office.
Yes.
So that's another way to get answers. Okay, so from Bridget O'Rourke, I agree about the personal services. How do we enforce the mask law? Lately, I've been hearing people say that the disease is not so bad, mostly because of the good job you have been doing protecting us. Would it be possible to start public service announcements talking about what happens before, during, and after the illness? Maybe introducing some FUD, fear, uncertainty, and doubt might help some people understand the consequences? And Mike, as we understand, the state now requires us to wear masks when we are out in public, when we can't socially distance. And so if you're outside, you have to wear a mask if you can't socially distance. Before, it was just when you walk into a business, the customer and the employer, the people working there, had to wear a mask. But now it's broader. And so I think Bridget is asking, should we be doing more in the way of letting people know why and what the consequences are?
Okay, there's people who think masks help and people who don't. I personally think they must help. Masks are supposedly most helpful from you contaminating somebody else. From your, whatever the polite word is for droplets, okay, to not infect somebody else. So you wearing a mask is supposed to do more public good. If other people wear a mask, that helps protect you from getting their potentially contaminated particles. As far as telling what COVID does to someone, a great percentage of people have had COVID and no longer have COVID and never knew they had COVID. A great number of people are what's called asymptomatic. They have COVID, don't know it. Other people felt some COVID-like symptoms, shortness of breath, tired, maybe some loss of food taste, and go, okay, whatever, and they self-quarantined for two weeks. And others did that and said, well, I just won't sneeze on anybody, or I'll wear a mask, or I'll keep my distance. I opened this program with, there's all kinds of irresponsible people out there. There are also people in our nursing facilities with pre-existing cases. And when they pass, they pass with what's called comorbidity. If you have stage four cancer and you're being given morphine by your hospice worker to manage your pain, which the law allows to happen, and they can keep, and I've had several relatives and friends and seen hospice do their thing, but at the end of the day, as you increase the morphine, your heart and lungs stop and you fall asleep and you pass away. And that's what's allowed here in California so far. When that person passes, tissue sample is taken or a swab is done and sent to our medical examiner coroner, Dr. Michelle Jordan, to see if that person had COVID. If that person did have COVID, COVID is listed as a comorbidity, as a cause of death. I've publicly objected to the fact that if you're giving morphine to somebody effectively to put them to sleep, that that is the cause of death, giving them morphine so that their heart and lungs stop. But the law is the law, and you can have multiple causes of death. And they all count as that was a death from cancer and a death from COVID, et cetera. So my answer to the question, Christina, is there is no one-size-fits-all. There can be a person who gets COVID and has no symptoms, a person who can get COVID and they think, oh, I must have allergies, having a hard time breathing. There are people who get COVID and they're achy and sore and hard to breathe for four or five days and recover or a couple of weeks. There can be people who get COVID and go to the hospital and don't need a ventilator, don't need ICU, and they can be in our regular beds. We have acute hospital beds, ICU beds, and surge beds. There can be people that need hospitalization and need one of those three different beds because of the way their body is reacting to the virus. There can be people that are put onto ventilators. Once you put on a ventilator, your current odds of getting off are not very good. I understand about 75% of the people pass. So those are all the different ways. You know, I hope, if I have a blood test done, I hope I find out that I have antibodies and that I had COVID and I never knew I had COVID, because I'm 62 and I have asthma. Okay, I'm hoping that's the case. I'm hoping this herd immunity is happening. And that's, but I'm always a cup is half-full kind of guy.
Mike, thank you. That's going to conclude the questions that we have because we're out of time. Do you want to close with any remarks?
Yes, I will close, and I will suggest this, that whenever you can, when you're outside, wear a mask, maintain distance, and wash your hands often. And when you go into any business, be it the ones that are allowed to be open now or the ones that hopefully will be added to that list next week, use your common sense. I went to two places today to pick up an item, okay? One was lunch. I went there, they gave me the tab, I paid my bill. They gave me my pen to sign my credit card slip. And before they did that, the person in gloves took an alcohol wipe, wiped it, handed it to me. I could smell the alcohol. I signed, I handed it back to them, they took an alcohol wipe, and they wiped it, okay? I went to another place, they handed me a pen with none of that. I said, "Do you have alcohol to rub that down?" They said, "No, no, it's fine." And I said, "No, it's not." I said, "Do you have anything else?" They said, "No." So I took my right hand, and this is my Mike personal rule. I only shake hands and open doors and et cetera with my right hand. If I have an itch in my eye or an itch under my nose or anything else or some, I use my left hand. I only use my right hand for touching things that are public. When I signed that credit card slip with my nail, when I came home, I washed my hands for 20 seconds with hot soapy water. You just got to be smart. And even being smart, you still may contract COVID. And if you think you have COVID symptoms, go to your doctor and get tested. Go to one of the 46 sites, but if you go to the 46 sites, tell them in advance you feel you have flu symptoms so they can properly prepare and keep you isolated, more isolated than normal. We've got to be smart. This disease may not ever go away. Okay, we're going to have to live with it, work around it, send our kids to school, and open our businesses. Thank you.
Mike, I just want to thank you on behalf of my Morgan Hill teammates, the city council, and just our community. We appreciate all that you're doing in your balanced approach and your safe approach. And just thank you for all that you do for our community.
Thank you very, very much. Morgan Hill Strong. Take care of you guys.
Thank you. Good night, everybody. That's right. Morgan Strong, Morgan Hill Strong, South County Strong. Good night, all.
Take care. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.